I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council Chamber for a public hearing on the redevelopment authority. At this time, I will declare the public meeting open, and I'd like to turn it over to Peg Dean.
Good evening, town councilors. Thank you for attending the public hearing. This meeting is being held to review the urban renewal plan's major amendment, which can be viewed at the website, the Town of Southbridge website. If you go to Boards under the redevelopment authority, there you can find the original urban renewal plan and the amended urban renewal plan. We did request comments and received none to date. This meeting, public hearing, was published two weeks in a row in the Telegram Gazette and posted to all community websites. I'm going to introduce Jeff Fasser from BFC Group to walk through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg, and good evening, everybody. Great to be back here again. Just lubricate the throat. That's not a heckler, is it?
Oh, it's Monday night.
So why are we here tonight? We're here to ask your approval of this Amendment 1 to the downtown Southbridge Urban Renewal Plan. And by amendment, it doesn't mean we're changing what was in the original plan that was approved back in 2012. We're adding to that plan, as I'll explain as we go through the presentation. I'm going to start with just a quick overview of the Urban Renewal Program and why it's been so helpful and productive for your downtown, and then bring you up to speed on what was in the original plan from 2012. We did a study in 2020 under some grant funding that Peg got to do. It wasn't an amendment. It was just looking at the Urban Renewal Plan and what's been done, what should be done next. Those recommendations fed into this official Amendment 1 to the Urban Renewal Plan. I'll go over what was added to the Urban Renewal Plan, mainly the objectives and actions. If there's public here that would like to make a comment, we're here to listen, and then obviously I'm here to answer any questions you may have. So very quickly, on the Urban Renewal Program, it's a state program that allows communities to undertake urban revitalization actions to stimulate areas of their community that are underperforming economically. So it's really an economic development strategy, and for a variety of reasons, again, vacant property, vacant buildings, lack of jobs, a number of conditions that, over time, haven't resolved themselves through the means of private enterprise. So Redevelopment Authority is able to step in and take some actions to help stimulate investment. They need to establish criteria, there are criteria to establish an urban renewal area, and so we follow the state guidelines for this. This plan is to be reviewed and approved by the state, so they're very strict in looking at what's in the plan, the argument we're making that this does qualify as an urban renewal area, and they have to see that it has identified the need and has identified actions to address those needs. And then who implements urban renewal plans? In your case, it's the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority. Some other communities have structured it differently, but most communities in Massachusetts that undertake urban renewal have a redevelopment authority. So starting with the original plan back in 2012, it built upon a goal that was in, developed previous to the development of the Urban Renewal Plan called the Long Range Plan for Southbridge, and that plan had a goal that, and the Long Range Plan said, apply this goal to develop an urban renewal plan for downtown, and that is to create a more vibrant downtown area through a series of public actions intended to stimulate private investment, resulting in a revitalized central business district with a mix of uses and opportunities for people to live, work, shop, and play. That was in the original plan. That's still the case. It was not changed or amended in any way. The original urban renewal plan here is outlined in red, so it's basically the core of the downtown area. In the middle area of the red is the, called the Central Street Parking Lot Block, but it's the block surrounded by Central, Main, Hamilton, and La Rochelle. And then from there, we move to the right to Foster Street. To the left, we take in the properties that abut Hamilton Street. Across Main Street, again, properties that abut Main Street on the opposite side, and then all the way up to the Quinabog River at the top of this map. So that was, that is your current urban renewal area, and as you are aware, a number of improvements have happened in that area, that many of them evolved from this urban renewal plan, and the town's going after funding and actions to implement certain things. The urban renewal, the 2012 plan, the original plan, had a number of objectives, and it was to encourage mixed-use development. It was to have minimal land acquisitions. It was to provide additional living options at all income levels. It was to add open space into the downtown area. That kind of goes with residential living, as you want more people living, you want more, you want the appropriate open space there for them to use. Certainly to improve business growth and investment. A lot of the buildings downtown were somewhat active on the first floor, but access to the upper floors was restricted. So the original plan talked about ways of providing access to upper levels of some of the buildings downtown to provide an opportunity for the building owner to make better use of those upper levels. Certainly preserve the historic character of downtown. That's one of your strengths. Increase job opportunities and improve traffic flow. And I think I have a slide here where we can talk about a number of the actions that have taken place already. From the objectives, there were a number of actions recommended. New mixed-use properties on parcels that were either vacant or underperforming. Development of new open space. You have the rail trail finally going through, so that was considered an open space amenity. Zoning improvements, roadway improvements, the major one being what I think we all refer to as the TIP project, but the improvements to Hamilton, La Rochelle, Hook, Central over to Foster. That idea came out of the original urban renewal plan of how to reorganize and improve those roadways, so that's going to be taking place. Pedestrian corridor improvements that go along with those roadway improvements. There was an expansion and unification of parking facilities. The Central Street parking lot was improved, upgraded since the urban renewal plan was done. And parcel acquisition if necessary, and I think only one parcel was acquired, that was the Morel, what was it called, whatever?
It's been the Monument Shop.
Morel Monument Shop, a little piece of land was acquired to help facilitate the roadway improvements. Only one acquisition's been needed so far. So since 2012, the town has undertaken other planning studies. First of all, the 2012 Plan Incorporated, as I mentioned, the 2003 to '04 Long Range Plan. There was a market study done in 2006. But since the plan was approved in 2012, you had a master plan in 2013. Open space plan, recreation plan updates in 2017, 2025 this year. A new economic development study in 2016. The 2020 Urban Agenda Grant that I mentioned earlier that looked at the urban renewal area specifically. And then at the same time, there was a 2020 Rapid Recovery Plan that was associated to COVID, where the state gave funding to communities to look at the impacts of COVID and what could be done to help keep those downtown areas mostly, you know, vibrant during COVID when there was a lot less people out and using retail. So the amendment builds upon all these. And again, in that 2020 study, because I said a lot of that, recommendations from that study were folded into this amendment. Multi-use trail, it actually wasn't, we didn't know that was going to happen in 2020. Now we do. Open space in parks, still the need for those. A river walk and river visibility. We have a great asset with the river running through downtown. What could be done to kind of link that to the downtown? Certainly property acquisition is needed, building rehabilitation, street and sidewalk improvements, facade improvements, and funding to help assist startup businesses and minority businesses. And then stakeholder engagement that really was trying to be comprehensive for the whole community, so it was with some specific recommendations for Black and Latinx community members and how to get them engaged in the process. The more people involved, the better the outcome will be. So again, all the original objectives stay in place. We added these objectives, increase stakeholder engagement with the Black and Latinx community members, offer incentives to attract private investment. The town has certain programs in place and make sure investors and developers, people looking to come to downtown, know about those incentives. Continue to improve the condition of roadways and sidewalks, which I'll talk about, enhance and promote the rail trail. It's going to be done this fall, with some minor things next spring, and now the town can start to promote it. And improve access and visibility of the Quinabog River as a resource, an economic development driver, and certainly the environmental stewardship of the river, because you want to retain that natural asset. These actions sound repetitive to the objectives, but in the report, there are almost like a half-page description of what can be do, what is to be done under each one of these actions. So with the outreach to Black and Latinx community members, it really talks about proactively reaching out to them, having publications in two languages, going to where those members are, whether it be certain meetings, churches, et cetera, making sure people are aware of what's happening downtown, and a series of other steps. Promote the town's incentives to attract private investment. Again, the town has some incentives now, make sure people are aware of that, and as other programs or opportunities become available, fold them into those incentive package. Improve the condition of roadways and sidewalks, so this TIP project is funded, and this plan talks about improvements to Hamilton Street and Central Streets to kind of build upon that core. The town received a grant for Central Street, I mean for Hamilton Street, so that's great. That'll be gearing up over the next year or two, because it's a big project. Central Street is in the report, to improve Central Street from Main down to the river, so they have improved pedestrian access along that, adjacent to the retail, that's part of, the part of Central Street that's closer to Main. Improve access to the Quinabog River rail trail there, so a number of different things could happen on Central Street to improve circulation in downtown as well as to the rail trail. Use signage and wayfinding and other events to promote the rail trail. Make sure people know it's here, how to get to it. And the town had previously talked about some special events throughout the year to help draw people to it and have really a community event there. And then acquire key parcels to improve public access and visibility to the Quinabog River. I'll be showing you a map that shows open space improvements and a key parcel that's been identified for that. And again, that could build, again, on economic revitalization, environmental stewardship. It almost goes hand-in-hand with the rail trail, because on the river, you could have kayaking, canoeing, rafting, things like that. So another outdoor activity could be happening right from your downtown area. So one thing the amendment does, and again, this came from that 2020 study, is it expands the boundary. So you can see on this map, in orange is the original boundary, so we've expanded up and to the left, going along Hamilton Street and along Crane Street. Crane Street is undergoing improvements right now to become a much better street and pedestrian circulation and bike circulation. And Hamilton, with the investment that's going to be going into improvements to Hamilton Street, we, the intent is that it'll help spur some investment along Hamilton Street also. So you want to capture opportunities up in that area by extending the boundary there, if the redevelopment authority needs to play a role in helping with investment in that area. The lower right, we're expanding over to Mechanic Street. There are some vacant parcels over there, old church and Catholic school complex, sorry, I forget the name of it. And then there's some properties along the street that parallels the river. North Street, thank you. Parcels along North Street. And then, right here, next to Town Hall, we've expanded the boundary to come to Town Hall to include the fire station and the building next door. So some tweaking of the boundaries here. We've done a in-the-field site assessment of all these parcels and ranked their condition and whether they're vacant or partially vacant, and again, that's used to help justify this So public actions intended to attract private investment, to rehabilitate the good building stock you have, to remove buildings that are currently in poor condition, that really have outlived their useful life, is what we like to say, and putting new buildings in their place. Attracting new business, attracting jobs, facade improvements that are happening now, let those continue to happen. New housing, some of there's, there's been investment in new housing to date, we want to continue that. Updating for code compliance with some of the buildings that are struggling. Do they meet code? Can things be done to help them meet code? Or again, do they need to be torn down and something new built? And a coordinated downtown business group, what you have, but let's see what we can do to make that stronger and more active and really promote downtown. So then I'm going to show some of these actions on maps here. So this is your downtown area. The purple dash line outlines the expanded urban renewal area. You can see the Quinabog River running through the middle top of this map here, and through the middle of it, with the long red line, is the rail trail, so that is under construction. That's an open space and public realm improvement. Abutting that, parallel to that, another long line is the Hamilton Street improvements, which actually go from, I'll call it La Rochelle, all the way to Main. Obviously, I'm just showing what's within the urban renewal area. The oval in the middle is the TIP project. The oval headed down or south from that is Central Street. Again, no funding has been secured for that yet, but it's been identified as a needed improvement. And then the circle up the top is at the intersection of Worcester and...
Mechanic.
Not Mechanic. Charlton. I was going to say Charlton, sorry. Worcester and Charlton Streets, where there's a small piece of land there that the town owns, improve that as a kind of a gateway park into downtown, and kind of tighten up the intersection to make it safer. So those are public realm improvements. Open space improvements. The large oval is an area of a parcel that's pretty much vacated right now, it's right along the river, old industrial parcel that has been identified as a great parcel for new open space to provide that riverfront access. So that would be a key addition to downtown. Then we have these smaller circles to the left. It's a small town-owned parcel on Hamilton Street that wants the streets improved. We see more economic activity, more residential up there, small open space for them. Circle kind of dead in the middle of this is the depot area, train depot area, where there will be some improvements as a result of the rail trail project, and a little bit with the TIP project, but they really need to beef that up as a trailhead park. I mentioned up at Worcester and Charlton Street, a little open space area there. And then to the far right is the parking lot behind the police station and a small parcel across the street that's owned by the town. We see that as a gateway into downtown, as you cross the river, do things, make improvements there to improve the visual attractiveness of that area, because you've got AO on one side, which is very attractive, you've got the Common further down. Let's really make that entrance into that area attractive also. Vacant properties. So this map is in the, in the report, and it shows vacant buildings, vacant land, partially occupied buildings, and vacant storefronts. They're all a little bit hard to see on this map, but they're all in there. And this is typically a major focus of an urban renewal plan, is dealing with these, what we call, underperforming properties. So what are we going to do? An urban renewal plan allows the redevelopment authority to acquire property if necessary. It doesn't mean they will, if it's in the plan, but it gives them the ability to acquire property. And pretty much all those vacant and partially vacant parcels identified in the previous map are on this as potential acquisitions to help stimulate economic investment in them. It also allows the redevelopment authority to kind of work with a landowner or developer as a partner. Maybe the developer can come in and offer certain things and investment and assets, and the redevelopment authority may be able, well, in other cases, the redevelopment authorities have stepped in, and maybe there was some public investment in the area too, to make the private investment, what as we call, pencil out, so it becomes, you know, a feasible project for investment. Just again, just because they're in here doesn't mean they will be acquired. It means they could be acquired if it's determined it will help in the investment of these properties, redevelopment of these properties. So what are we suggesting happen to these properties? Some of them are highlighted here as buildings to be rehabilitated. Some of these buildings may or may not be able to be rehabilitated, but as you recall, one of the objectives is to preserve the historic character of downtown, and as much as we can preserve some of the valuable architectural buildings, the better it is. Some of them all may not be architectural gems, but they're certainly conditioned where they could be reused, such as the auto parts store across from Cumberland Farms that's now vacant, where there's always Pizza Is. So there were some opportunities here to, oh, and the building across the street from the depot where the retail establishment is now, but there was hopes for a much more major investment there. Maybe not the most attractive building, but certainly in a case that it could be rehabilitated and hopefully look better at the same time. And this is just, again, showing where these buildings are on that previous illustrative plan I showed you, because that orients to this one that shows where buildings would be constructed. And some of the parcels that are identified for potential acquisitions, some of those parcels are vacant, and new buildings are proposed on them. Some of those parcels have buildings on them, and those buildings have, look like they're in not great shape, and wouldn't be worth the investment to try to bring them up to good shape. Better off tearing them down and building something new. And a word about property acquisitions. Again, they have to be identified if they're a potential acquisition. It doesn't mean the redevelopment authority will acquire them. In the past, the redevelopment authority and the original plan talked about minimizing acquisitions and trying, if there were any acquisitions, negotiate an acquisition, and that's what we're seeing in most communities these days. It's a negotiation between the redevelopment authority and the property owner with the understanding that there's a project there waiting to happen. You're not just, they're not just buying property to sit on it. They're buying it because there's a potential investment that could take place. So therefore, not all properties that are acquired are taken by eminent domain. As I mentioned, it tries to be a negotiation, negotiated purchase. When there is a purchase, whether it's negotiated or eminent domain, there needs to be two independent appraisals to ensure the fair market value of that property is paid to the owner, and if there are any businesses or occupants in any of the properties being acquired, they are relocated to a new location if they choose to be, they may not want to be, and then they can get paid out a certain amount of money, but if they choose to be relocated, that whole cost is covered by the redevelopment authority for helping them find a new place, fit up a new place, and move them to a new place. So again, back to why we're here tonight, what's happened to date. Planning Board has determined that this Amendment 1 is based on a local plan and any other plans related to the area. This is a state requirement, and the Board has, Planning Board has taken that vote. The redevelopment authority has determined that this Amendment 1 is a sound redevelopment strategy, and now we're here before you for the public hearing, which is required, and to request your vote to approve the plan. For the public, these are people to contact if you have questions, and I'll leave this up here if anybody from the public wishes to comment, or otherwise if you have questions.
Questions by anybody in the public? If not, are there any questions, better counsel? Counselor Shinya.
Mr. Chair, are we looking for a vote tonight?
It is on the agenda.
Right, I don't have that agenda.
If you feel you're not having enough information, we can postpone it. I feel comfortable with a lot of the stuff, but the map isn't big enough for me to understand which building it is. Yeah, I got the areas down, but there are some buildings in town that, you know, I don't know if they're in that area of labeling. We might, might take a look at that, but...
Just one more question. Is the Central Street project that we talked about included in this redevelopment plan?
So the which project?
The Central Street project going from Main down to the Hook.
Yeah.
Possibly making it one-way and one-sided park and that kind of stuff. That's in this plan?
Correct. This plan recommends that action on Central Street.
Thank you. It's all in that.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, for you. I got a question. The way, the blue line in future on Thomas Street, Mechanic Street, the way it was cut, I mean, we're looking to update some areas and support some business, correct? That's the whole idea. So why we don't continue Mechanic Street, the lease up to Old Lucy's Laundry Mart, and then we go up straight? It's another business, was there a blue building? I don't know, a couple of years was approved for license to sell Molpet or something like that? Because that area kind of left behind, and I like to see the whole Thomas Street area because the way it's cut, like weird, and you get that two stores on Mechanic Street as well, that old building. That one there, you know, those business area there, and the area kind of left behind. I'm not sure why we don't move up more forward, up to the lease, Old Lucy's Laundry, and then we go straight to Thomas Street, and we go back to, you have the Astaban, I think, building there for the kids?
Yep.
So if we can do that, I mean, I see it, or go straight up to Worcester Street and get back. I mean, a few businesses there, and the area kind of, I like to see it light up there, to be honest, especially Thomas Street. We have a few activity there, maybe that will make it less and more looking better for the town.
We can certainly look at that with Peg. It's one of these things, and this happens in other communities too, it's like, we're going to go here, well, why can't we go there? And then we go there, and it's like, well, why can't we go here? And I'm not saying that to discount your suggestion, but...
But the way it was cut, it's like weird, you know, the cut, like, one stores after Charlton Street, and you go behind Thomas, and then it's like, we're looking for specific area to light up to the town and clean it up, and some few businesses here and there's. I mean, especially this area, specific Mechanic Street, it's, it's no activity there, and everything is left there. Like, everything downtown, everything, you know, this way, this way. We never looked that way, now especially we have fire department, new fire department.
New investment there.
If we can, it's, I like to see that going there, to be honest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. So I generally liked what I'm seeing in this amendment. Essentially, we're expanding the area.
Yes.
And then adding some objectives and action items, correct?
Yes.
And so, one of the objectives is to offer incentives to attract private investment into downtown, which is a great objective, but I think we've been trying to do that for a long time.
Yes.
And I don't see a whole lot of success down there. I mean, when I drive through the downtown still, we see so many, so many empty storefronts, so many, you know, it just looks, it looks like a lot of urban blight down there. And it's unfortunate, because I think that downtown area, we have, we have the luxury of having a well-laid-out downtown area that I think is just perfect for retail and dining and those kind of things. I just think it should, it doesn't make, to me, any sense as to why we can't get investment down there. And I'm wondering, you know, I've seen, I've seen other town... And I'm wondering, you know, I've seen, I've seen other towns that have similar situations where they had a big factory and that left and basically left the downtown area vacant and they've been able to redevelop their downtowns, but it's a mix of, I would say, you know, retail and dining and residential as well. So I just don't, you know, we can have a great plan, but we have to execute the plan. And quite honestly, you know, we've been, especially in the downtown streets, that's been in, that's already been in the urban renewal plan, but yet it doesn't seem like anything is happening down there. I mean, we see bits and, you know, new business here, I mean, Central Pizza upgraded their facility with another restaurant that opened there on Central Street. And, you know, that's great, but still, we still see so much, so many empty storefronts and so many, you know, you know, honestly, we've got a pot shop downtown. I mean, I don't think that's the kind of business we really want down there, but that's just me. So I just like to say, I don't know what we can do. We can say we're gonna, we're gonna offer, we're gonna try to offer incentives, but what kind of incentives are we gonna do? And do we have a target? Do we have a target type of business that we want to bring into the downtown? You know, what about like, you know, maybe art galleries or things of that nature that will, that will drive some kind of foot traffic? Because, you know, putting, you know, putting, putting just general retail down there isn't gonna work because people don't buy in small stores like that anymore. You know, they don't go to a shoe store like, but, you know, on the corner like they did in the old days.
Right.
You know, they'll go to, they'll buy their shoes online.
Yep.
You know, that retail has changed, so we have to adapt as to what kind of retail actually works down there and how are we gonna, how are we gonna attract those kind of businesses? We have to figure that out. I'm not sure we've figured that out yet, but I just, I don't know, I just, I like the plan. I like the plan. I'm just saying, the plan is great, but we can have a great plan, but it doesn't mean anything unless we execute it.
Yep. Totally agree with everything you've said. PEG and I had this conversation as the plan was being pulled together. A couple of thoughts on that. One is in the, in the urban renewal plan, it talks about the town doing an updated marking study, market study to help identify those businesses that might have the best likelihood of success downtown. So as to what businesses we're trying to attract, partly would depend on a market study to identify that. When we had our public meeting here in these, in the council chambers, there were some people that showed up that talked about businesses they wanted to open downtown. So we knew there were, there's some sort of business interests already, but we also heard about some of the challenges they have to overcome. A lot of them have to do with the buildings and the condition of the buildings and the rehab that would have to go into the buildings to make it financially feasible for them to be there. PEG can talk to us better than I do, but there are some incentive programs for facade improvements, elevator improvements and maybe some other things for downtown businesses. The one other thing that the plan does is, as I said, it identified vacant or partially vacant parcels and vacant storefronts. And those property owners may have no interest in selling their property. They're just sitting on it. They don't put it on the market, but if it's in the plan as an acquisition, then the town or the redevelopment authority has the opportunity to step in and say, you really got to invest in your building. We'll offer some incentives if they're available. We want to see this happen, but we can't force private investment. It's private. But if you're not going to invest in it, we're gonna acquire the property from you and find someone who will invest in the property. And that may be the biggest carrot you have, or biggest stick, sorry, or carrot, because you could look at it either way. You have for some of these buildings that really haven't seen much investment or improvement lately, but it, you're right though, it's a challenge because the public can only do so much. It's the private that's got to come in and invest. And we frequently talk about downtown Hudson, which was in terrible condition many, many years ago, and it took that one key investor to come in, then invested in Flatbread Pizza and then a pizza, I mean, ice cream parlor across the street, same owners. And that was the spark that then brought other investment in. So sometimes you gotta just find that initial person to come in. You may have to give them a little bit more to get them to invest, but then that can stimulate other investment, but there's no guarantees. You're absolutely right.
So, 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 right. So I just wondering, have we thought about maybe, you know, partnering with, with a developer that would have, you know, a vision? I mean, and I just, there's a, there's a local development company and I can't remember the name off the top of my head, but they built this place in Salem, New Hampshire. And it's mixed use retail. It's got, they went with a Tuscan theme. I forgot, I think it's called the Tuscan Village.
Tuscan Village.
But it's laid out like a city street plan.
Yep.
And, you know, when I went up there, I'm like, this could be downtown Southbridge. And, and, but they developed this whole thing. And I'm just wondering if we could partner, if we thought about maybe partnering with, with a development firm like that, that has experience in building these type, building these type of things and attracting businesses into, into their facilities, if that would be some, an option we might want to consider.
Absolutely. The urban renewal plan allows the redevelopment authority to do that. They don't have to do it in a vacuum. They can do that with council and the town, but they're the ones who can negotiate for economic development purposes. Town council can't.
Right.
So absolutely, identifying a potential developer would be great. As we all know, PEG's got a lot on our plate, but finding the time for someone to do that outreach and trying to find even just a few developers that might have an interest and then trying to pitch the project to them and see if they have any interest in talking further.
If I could just add to the comments, the Economic Development Commission has been working to meet as a quorum over the last few years. They have four out of seven right now, so it's very hard, but they've been doing good work the few times they've met. One of the things they're looking at is how to lure a restaurant group, how to consider getting developers into the area. One of the members, Tomas Oksha, he met with Rob Nahagian, who is a real estate counselor. Rob Nahagian did some work for the AO, looking at a macro level assessment of the town and came to conclusions that the town really needed to go for, this was back in 2021, post Department of Defense contract, Chip was looking at what was the best, highest and best use for the AO. And so I tried to get as much information out of this person as possible. At the time, he suggested we go for as much discretionary funding as possible, which we did as a town, right? We've made an impressive attempt at whatever we can to secure for ourselves. We now are reaching out to him saying, we have this entire middle block of Main Street. That's a huge opportunity if we could find the right developer. And so he's going to be meeting with the Economic Development Commission sometime in the next few weeks. And what I have asked, he is a Boston University professor and he's also part of a couple of these national real estate boards. He will be helping us to apply as a case study to the national counselors of real estate to be, then they'll bring in, you know, a handful of experts to look at our town for a week. They do as much research as they can and they make some suggestions. What I hope selfishly to get out of it is just more eyes on us as an opportunity and if any of them have potential real estate connections. So that, right now, that's the most immediate attempt at that. But by all means, you know, if we can get more of these suggestions and work with our boards to try to multiply our efforts, it's wonderful. So thank you for the comments.
I got one more, one more, if you don't mind. The other, the other issue I had was parking, I mean, in this, in this plan. We've got two lots, one on the north side and one on the south side of Main Street. When I look in those lots, there's not a lot of business downtown right now, right? But you look in those lots, there's a lot of cars in those lots. So, you know, my, my guess is that there are a lot of those spaces in there being occupied by residents, you know, it's public parking out there. If we drive business downtown, we have to have a place for people to park.
Correct.
So what is, is there a plan for parking down there?
Yes. So I don't know if the council remembers, but as part of your One Stop for Growth last summer, you approved applying for a parking study and that's for this exact reason. So there's, you know, there's questions. It's hard to, until you see the businesses, it's hard to justify planning for parking right now. What you could do as an immediate effort, if you do start to see businesses and want to free up spaces, is you go to the traffic commission or we as a town could go to the traffic commission and we could ask if we could start posting signs in the parking lots for different sorts of parking restrictions, right? We could do, you know, no overnight parking. We could do, you know, restricted hours parking, whatever that might be, to be able to free up some of those spaces. And then people would have to do on-street parking farther away from their, wherever their apartment is. Thank you.
And if I could add to that, in the original plan for the Central Street lot, it called for it to be upgraded, but also a parking deck added in. So it basically doubled the number of spaces. Town decided to just do the surface lot to start. The other benefit of having that deck was that it could provide direct access into the second level of those buildings of putting it to help make those more marketable too. So you invested in Central Street, you may not want to touch it, but that was an option that was looked at in the past to make them, make them up in the future as success comes into downtown.
Thank you.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Try to keep it brief, but I do want to state that, you know, since I got on, I was actually on the redevelopment authority, I don't know, 14, 15, somewhere around there, and then not only spent a couple of years on it, but I know we're working on the Central Street parking lot from, I think, I don't know what council laws we used to call it, but it was, but it was, it was set up and it finally got some, most things moving along and maybe not all the perfect planning, but it actually helped the area. I will state that the redevelopment authority, I've talked to council laws on quite a few counselors up here about the redevelopment authority's ability, it's probably the most underutilized board that we have in the town with much more power than many other boards have. And I wish we would be able to use that more, but I'm glad to see the fact that it is expanded out. I agree with Counsel Dow that maybe some of the areas could be expanded out. And I know you had already had public hearings. I know you've had quite a few meetings on this. And so I went back and I kind of watched, I actually watched the meeting from August 7th that you had. I'm glad to see that a lot of the work that's being done right now is actually instrumental from, has been, the urban renewal plan was instrumental in getting a lot of these projects that are happening from complete streets to the rail trail to the, you know, the parking lot to Central Street to Hook and Loudshell. The one thing, and I understand about the eminent domain authority that the redevelopment authority has, Rick Clements had brought up opportunity zones. We have two in this town created by, back, I think it was 16 or 17 or 18, somewhere when it was approved. And we really have been underutilizing that ability. And of course, it takes the private sector to do, you know, really come into this town. But I'm happy to see that, that I think it's on section one, the larger opportunity zone basically is this urban renewal plan. So I know he brought it up. Are you guys putting that in the application itself when it goes to the state or is this something we can add in there about the opportunity zones in here?
We can certainly add it in, yes. We need to, quite honestly, this has been stretched out a while. I don't know if we already mentioned it is in an opportunity zone, but if we don't mention that in the report, we should.
Okay. I know it's been, it's pretty important to be able to put that in there if we can do that.
Yes.
Now, one thing that you had mentioned, I will also say the goals and objectives of what we gave the town manager recently really betray exactly what the urban renewal plan talks about.
Good.
But the, one thing that you mentioned at that meeting, so the redevelopment authority unanimously voted in favor of, Planning Board unanimously in favor of, and I know these are basic recommendations, they're not like concrete things that we have to do, but it gives us a tool. You stated that after the town council, it goes to the state.
Yes.
Did you say in there that it could be changed by the state?
What the state typically does is they either approve it or they say, we'll give you conditional approval if you go back and reconsider a couple of items. So they never reject, I haven't seen them reject one. They do have to approve it, but they don't make you make changes. They may just ask you to consider certain things.
They're more of a recommendation from the state that maybe you want to add this in there?
Yeah.
And would it come back to?
With the intent that they're trying to make it strong.
Absolutely. I understand that. You know, but then it'd be up to the town council to ultimately approve that again, correct? Any amendments to it? Okay. I appreciate, Ms. Dean, I know you've been working here quite a few years since Ms. Dean has been on board as our director and I appreciate all the hard work that the teams did to come up with this area. So thank you very much for your time.
Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I've got a simple question and maybe one is a little tougher. The simple question is, does Hamilton Street extend just across street or does it go all the way down to Main Street?
It goes all the way down to Main, but the grant only goes from the intersection where the statue is.
Oh, no, no. Does it go to the Main Street on the other side?
He's saying that goes to West Street with the intersection, no, Main.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound.
Hamilton Street goes from Main Street, loops all the way through and connects back to Main Street.
He's asking what do we include?
We include from Main Street downtown.
Yep.
Up to the edge of the urban renewal boundary, which is on Hamilton Street.
Okay.
But the roadway project, the grant that the town got will go all the way to the other connection to Main Street.
Okay.
He's asking about the ways that it's built, right?
I should, well, just, because I brought up Hamilton Street in a number of different ways. I wanted to give a full description.
You answered my question.
Okay.
No problem. Okay. Can you explain a little bit about the criteria that's used to decide what the boundaries are for the urban renewal area so that, kind of piggybacking on, on Counsel Dow, why not the Globe or why not Santasdale or East Main Street? You know, how does that, how did that go about happening?
So I'll start on the west side on extending down Hamilton and Crane. That extension arose from the public investment in Crane Street and the rail trail that comes out onto Crane Street as well as the Hamilton Street grant roadway improvements. So the idea that the public investment will hopefully help encourage private investment in those areas. So that's why it was extended to the west in that area. To the east, there was a desire to address some of the challenges on Mechanic Street. So that's why it was extended all the way to Mechanic Street there. And we just came along Charlton. I agree with the counselor's comment about why the line there. It either should have been closer to Charlton and just dealt with Charlton, but to kind of split the block is something we need to look at, but it was because of really the Diocese property, the vacant property over there as well as Mechanic Street. That's why it was stretched in that direction.
Okay. So then, is that something we can amend ourselves or is that something that needs to go through a process? And if so, what would that process be in terms of expanding out a little bit more?
If the boundary was changed at this point, we'd have to go back to the redevelopment authority and we'd have to go back to the planning board before it then comes back to you.
Yeah. And would we need another public hearing as well?
Yes.
Okay. So the whole process would start over?
The approval process would start over, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep.
I just, PEG.
And we welcome, of course, any changes that the town is interested in making. Just the only external factor that I have in my head is the fire station, wanting the fire station approved by the time it's vacated, should the town want to consider allowing the redevelopment authority that ability to not follow your procurement laws. They have a lot more ability to negotiate for businesses. So that would be my own selfish external deadline.
Just a quick question. Usually when we think about drawing lines, we don't gerrymander them where they curve and move. We usually cut them on center of street or other side of street. When you say Mechanic Street, does that mean Brochue Street is in the zone? It's one of the biggest blighted buildings down at the flat that would make great veteran housing, great elderly housing. It's an old school. It's got its own street directly to it. It doesn't congest the area, has a great parking lot along with it. It's behind that church that fell down in the rectory.
Right.
Is that in the zone?
I can't tell from the map I'm looking at. We can certainly look at it and get back to you. We can certainly look at it and give back to you and take in the suggestions to then expand the map, by all means. Remember, remembering also when we were starting this process, we were sort of just doing, we were just, we had the existing, and we literally just sort of symmetrically went out in each direction, so that it just seemed like we were expanding our bounds. But then, like Jeff was talking about, there were some key factors, like the public money, where was it going already? Or a dilapidated building that we knew, like Sacred Heart, right? So, you know, there were a couple reasons why we were kind of reaching for these things, the fire station going down to. And so it wasn't necessarily, and this was back in 2021 that this conversation started about the expansion. So, you know, many things have changed since then.
A second question on the process. Say we vote on Agenda Item Number 11 tonight, favorable of the major amendment, does this mean that we can still amend it further?
Yes.
I'd hate to see it fail, because we have more amendments.
So what we've learned in this process is how to go about doing amendments, which is something this town hadn't done in the past. We can, I've learned from Hudson and from Pittsburgh's redevelopment authority, yeah, how they do, you know, in a short amount of time, will go for another small amendment. And so those could potentially, yes, okay.
Yes, absolutely it can. And you bring up a good point, not to discount the councilor's comment, but you could approve it the way it is, but that doesn't mean you can't come back and do another amendment, which in this case would be a very small amendment to extend the boundary.
I think, I understand the concept of what you're doing with the town, but much, many councilors are talked to by people where money's poured into one section.
Yep.
And all of a sudden, they see this other blight in this, out in other areas, and they're concerned about, why not me?
Yep.
And I think as councilors representing, you know, some of the neighborhoods, as you know, all politics is local, we get the call on the neighborhood stuff. And, you know, we always say that the Globe and the Flat, I don't know if you've heard the term, the Globe is up by Big Bunny, and the Flat is where the high-rise is, they're almost the stepchild children to economic development, which is the downtown area. To Counsel Kelly's point, we've poured money and money into Main Street, into the core. A lot of housing in some of those buildings, to the point where it eats up the parking. The Capasso Project, beautiful building, nice apartments, no parking for business because they devoured the Elm Street parking lot. We're gonna be selling our fire station, vision down the road, what if a brewery buys it, where do they park? So when you talk about economic development, business, you got the right counsel in front of you. If you're talking about housing, we would like housing in the proper application. And I think like Brochue Street, if anybody bought the building, wanted to make it apartments, I'd be on board because of where it is, how it's structured, parking and everything. It's almost a perfect location, especially for elderly veterans. But I just wanted to add that, that we deal with this on a daily basis, then I will be voting to amend, and maybe further look at amending it further, a small amendment or whatever, because I think you have a grip on what's going on.
Yep.
Any other comments by any of the councilors?
So, so...
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Counsel. What I meant by the way I see the line, I don't mean to specific point on anything, the whole idea, you know, the way the line go to Charlton Street to the liquor store in the corner, you get Monarch Glass, it's a business being, before I either born, probably, in this town. And I would like to see more update there, you know, and if you go straight down, you get Lucy Laundry's, what's, you know, that one is shut down, it needs some help, probably to go back and run in if the owner want to. So it's like more businesses on this area can light up that area, bring in more apartment or houses, businesses there, if we can extend that line, you know, behind Monarch Glass, straight down to Lucy, go back up, what you call that little street up there, is another business on the side there, a small building, and then you can go straight up to Worcester Street or back on Thomas Street.
That's Brochue. That's Brochue.
Yeah, please, thank you. That's all.
Yeah, I know the area, and you're right, it needs help.
Any other conversation, any other comments? No further comments? Would you like a closing statement?
I don't have a closing statement, except thank you for your questions and time and your ideas. And I guess I would encourage a positive vote, even though there are other concerns, because things are happening, and one of the things PEG and I talked about was, this is the time to plant the seed and start the planning, so when the roadway improvements are done on that tip project, you're ready to go. Because it's gonna be disrupted downtown for a couple of years, and who was gonna want to invest until they see how that shakes out.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.
I'd like to declare the public hearing closed, and we will get ready for our media at 7:00.